Okay, I would call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for July 3rd to order. At this time, as we, in our normal procedure, do a moment of silence, I think as we enter into this Independence Day week and weekend, be mindful of, it's not all about fireworks and barbecues, it's about the independence of this country. It's the dedication of the men and women who not only sacrificed their time and effort, but in many cases made the ultimate sacrifice. Help us to stay focused on what this holiday is truly all about and the people that made it possible. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Gripp, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much, and welcome to all my colleagues as we begin this, again, holiday week. I want again wish everyone a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would also like to continue to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect a common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for all being here. We have a city administrator update this evening.
Two quick things, just a reminder, because we've started the meeting early, but the publications for the public hearings are 5:30. If we can hold the public hearings towards the end of the meeting, that would be good. And secondly, and maybe bittersweet but yet important, it is Director Hoak's last council meeting with us before he embarks on his new adventure, and we are lucky enough to have the Hoak family with us here tonight. Scott's left a really great mark on our organization and in our community, and we thought it only fitting to share some of the moments of history of his career that date back a smidge to some characters that he may have been at another point in time, but he will forever be remembered as a great member of our team, and I know he'll do great things in Cedar Rapids. We invite you to stay after the meeting and enjoy cake with Scott and his family. The picture is great, if you haven't looked at it, but Clay, if you'll roll the tape.
How many times will he be singing Hickory Dickory?
My name is Scott Hoak, I'm the park recreation director for the city of Davenport. We're here at Sunderbrook Park. We have some special stuff going on today. We've added a wonderful feature to the entry of the park that goes into the bike trail. Obviously, you can probably see the beautiful Black Eyed Susans that are lining the path. They're a little bigger than normal because they're actually man-made. There's no registration fee for the day, and there's no starting and stopping point. You can ride as little as you want or as much as you want, and we're gonna start over. I goofed that way up. I goofed that way up. Do we clap?
So, there may have been a fair amount of name-calling and throwing stuff at him for the past few weeks, so we thought this was a fitting end to that.
Thank you, and thank you for the cake, and seriously, Scott, thank you for all the efforts you've done. You've made a big impact on not only Parks and Rec but our city, and thank you for you and your family, and we wish them all continued success in your new experiences that you have. And you can always catch all of our meetings on by way of the television, so we want to keep you connected, so thank you. Yeah, thank you. Again, I wanted to reiterate the fact that normally we would do the public hearings now. We're gonna delay those because it was published that it would start at 5:30, so we will hold those and we'll go right into our normal meeting, and there are no presentations this evening. If there's any petitions or communication by any of our council members, and I see some have a few, so Alderman Dickman, if you would lead the way, please.
Thank you, your honor. Just a quick reminder to everyone to please be safe if you are using consumer fireworks tonight and tomorrow. We don't want you to have to call 911, and so, of course, we want to see you tonight at the professional fireworks, if you would join us at the stadium. And then also, next week, normally I would have a ward meeting, but instead, there is an event going on at the Figgy's, so wanted to invite everyone to that. It will be a presentation of the Voiceless, and Vanessa McNeil will be speaking. She's a TED Talk speaker, which most people are familiar with, and it's always fun to have someone come and speak to us, so hopefully some of you will be able to join me for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to do an early invite to everybody. The next third ward meeting is going to be Saturday, July 14th, not this coming Saturday, but the next Saturday, at Cedar Memorial Christian Church at 306 Cedar Street, but we're going to have a relatively short meeting, and then we're gonna adjourn to the Naval Station/Buchanan School for a tour of this redeveloped area. It is still being finished up, but we're inviting third ward folks, and if you'd like to be a third warder for a day and see what's happening down there, you're certainly welcome to the meeting as well. And so, that will be Saturday, July 14th, at 10 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, your honor. First off, I wanted to thank the great people from the Brick House, U Center up on 15th and Harrison Street, the Police Department, Paula Sands, and KWQC for featuring that neighborhood organization last Friday night. It was a great event. Many people attended, even though the weather was challenging, it was still a fantastic event, and PDD did as usual their great job, and thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, your honor. This past week, I was on vacation in the Smoky Mountains of Tennessee, and on the way down and on the way back, I always try to stop in cities and walk around and try to bring back ideas of how Davenport can be a better city. And so, what I did with my family is we stopped at three very nice riverfront parks, one in Nashville, one in Louisville, and then one in Owensboro, Kentucky, and I was able to gain some inspiration, and mostly from the park in Owensboro, Kentucky, because if you know anything about that city, it's a city of only 57 to 60,000 people. It's a pretty small city, and what they've put on their riverfront is really, really impressive. They spent tens of millions of dollars, which has leveraged over a billion dollars of investment on their riverfront, and so it inspired me to make sure that we continue to press forward on our Main Street landing and River Vision plans and make sure that we execute and we don't, as a council, settle for less than a world-class riverfront. And so, that's what I'm bringing back with me from vacation, and if anyone on the council would like to see the pictures, I took roughly 1,000 pictures of my family in the park, so...
I think there was 950 of your family in a couple of the parks, but that's good. I just want to note again, as echo Alderman Dickman's comments related to Red, White, and Boom, it is this evening, so please, as we finish the meeting, find a good spot. There's a lot of great spots to be able to watch, a tremendous opportunity to bring Rock Island and Davenport together in a great community event. Also, I just want to note, we've been talking about our Youth Community Action Summit. That work continues, so we want to make sure that individuals understand that we're still reaching out to get everybody an opportunity to give their input. So if you have a neighborhood group or individuals who are unable to attend that first larger summit session, we've got about six of them scheduled, additional ones, so please let us know. Call the office, we'll come to you. You don't have to necessarily come to us, we'll come to you because we want to get some feedback, and then in late July, early August, we'll come back with what we found out, and then we're actually gonna put a working plan together to actually show, what are we gonna do about it now that we heard? It's one thing hearing about it, but something we're gonna follow up with, so we'll keep you all involved, and we want you all to be involved in this process, so thank you. We're gonna move now on to some action items for discussion. We're going to go through those, and again, at the committee the whole, we had talked about all these and discussed these. This is not a voting session, it's decided what moves on to the agenda for next week. So we're gonna open up, our first area for community development is, Alderman Gripp will lead a discussion on community development, and Alderman Clul will set an agenda.
Thank you, your honor. We have eight items listed, and I will be making a motion to add a ninth item for community development, but let's get started on item number one, which is a third consideration, ordinance for case number ORD 18-01, amending title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning, highway corridor overlay district, and Elmore Corners overlay district by creating an Elmore Corners overlay district and design standards. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, your honor, Candy Pasternak, resident of Sixth Ward, employed in the Third Ward, here again on behalf of THF in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for an Elmore Corners overlay district that does not include the THF parcel. We're aware of things stand and where it may go next week, but we would again encourage this council's support of the planning and zoning recommendation, which this council, on two previous readings of the ordinance, has voted unanimously to support an Elmore Corners overlay district without THF. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a third consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-04, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 33.11 acres, more or less, of property located east of Jersey Meadow subdivision and north of East 53rd Street from A1 Agricultural District to R2 Low Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name, ward or address.
Good evening, I'm Pete Malarkey with Pheasant Creek LLC, 4215 East 60th Street. We're the petitioners for the zoning request, as well as the next zoning request you're gonna hear in just a minute. We wanted to first of all take a brief minute to thank the council for your support in our zoning requests up to this point, and hopefully some continued support moving forward. We also want to let you know we're here to answer any questions you have, so feel free to let us know if there's anything we can answer for you. We also have two other resolution items on your agenda you're gonna see here in just a little bit. The first is a final plat of this land to split the greater parcel into three smaller parcels that will match these zoning requests that we have before you. The second is a preliminary plat of the 64-lot residential subdivision that we're anticipating in this acreage. We're very excited to show you this preliminary plat, it's something we've worked hard on. We're hoping that you guys like what you see and will support that preliminary plat. Again, if you have any questions regarding any of these items, please feel free to let us know, we're here to answer anything we can. Thank you very much, we wish you a happy fourth, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a third consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-05, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 7.41 acres, more or less, of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek from A1 Agricultural District to PDD Planned Development District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four, a second consideration, ordinance amending various sections of the Davenport Municipal Code to bring uniformity to the process of licensing and permitting for right-of-way encroachments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number five is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-06, being the request of Tim Schaefer of Schaefer Automotive Services LLC, doing business as Dale Service for a rezoning on 4,380 square feet acre of property known as 1909 North Zenith Avenue. The rezoning is from R3 Moderate Density Dwelling District to C2 General Commercial District to provide parking for the associated business Dale's Service Center. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Item number six is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-07, being the request of Tim Schaefer of Schaefer Automotive Service LLC, doing business as Dale Service for a rezoning amendment on 6,000 square feet, more or less, of property known as 3816 West Locust Street, located north of West Locust Street and east of North Zenith Avenue. The rezoning is from R3 Moderate Density Dwelling District to C2 General Commercial District to provide parking for the associated business Dale's Service Center. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Tim Schaefer, First Ward. I just wanted to, the reason why I wanted to make a comment, I'm just trying to make less congestion, better parking for that area of the corner, and for deliveries, and to make it look a little nicer. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? We'll go to council comments. Alderman Dunn.
I just want to thank the petitioner for this. We've had parking issues up there, and this is really gonna help him out, but I want to clarify, there will be no junk vehicles on these lots, correct? Thank you.
Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution for case number F18-03, final plat, Pheasant Ridge First Edition on 43.27 acres, more or less, located west of Elmore Avenue and north of East 53rd Street, containing three lots to facilitate the sale of property for development. Property is currently zoned A1 Agricultural District. Lot 1 is proposed to be rezoned to R2 Low Density Residential District, and Lot 2 is proposed to be rezoned to PDD Planned Development District. As the gentleman mentioned earlier, we had tabled these to come back and then be voted on concurrently with the rezoning requests that we discussed earlier in this discussion. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution for case number P18-03, request of Pheasant Creek Estates LLC for a preliminary plat of 43.27 acres, more or less, creating 64 buildable lots and 17 outlots. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And we do not have an item number nine, but I am going to make a motion to add item number nine that was omitted from the agenda, and it is a second consideration for the ordinance ORD 18-02, amending title 17. It is the commercial identity for the Rockingham Road Corridor.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This item will be added to the agenda, and I will read it now. Item number nine is a second consideration, ordinance for case ORD 18-02, amending title 17, to incorporate a zoning component to promote and create a commercial identity for the Rockingham Road Corridor through design and use standards. This text amendment will include a map amendment for the area along Rockingham Road from John Fell Drive in the southwest and to Marquette Street in the northeast portion of the corridor. City of Davenport is the petitioner. Chapter 17.60 of the Davenport Municipal Code allows for text and map amendments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one. Oh, ma'am.
I just had a couple of...
Please step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward.
My name is Lori Kasky. I live at 4302 Rockingham Road, and I just had a couple of questions. How will this affect the residents there, the residential lots?
I'm going to direct you to, you don't want me answering these questions, correct? Because I'll take a stab at it, but you're better off talking with Bruce, the gentleman right there, and we will keep this on discussion, just to ensure that all of your questions are answered. But please, go ahead and ask whatever other questions you have, we'll get those on records, and he can answer your questions, and we'll make sure that they're answered to your satisfaction before we vote on it next week.
Okay, I was also wondering how it would affect our taxes, our property tax.
Mr. Chair, I can field that question. There's no direct impact from the zoning ordinance change on property values. Now, if it becomes a nice area, or it's already a nice area, but if it becomes a hot development area as a result of this, values may go up and increase in the future.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Good questions. Are there any other questions from the public on this item? All right, we will go to council discussion. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the public hearing will come shortly when our time is correct, but as we did before, we grandfathered a couple of folks in on that area, and I think there's another gentleman that has a property there that would like that consideration, so I'll ask if it's okay with you that he talks with staff and we get that noted, so you're gonna keep it on discussion. So if it's okay, we'll know which that is next time, so we can consider that as part of that. Thank you.
Is he going to bring that forward at what point?
Mr.?
No, I'm...
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that he come, he just talk to staff about what his property is.
Right.
What the current uses are, and...
That's my thought, so I'll have him get with Bruce. Thank you. Yeah, and he's in the audience, he's listening to us, so. It's not you, sir, it's someone else. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bruce, do you feel like you can cover that young lady's question at this time?
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. The rezoning is directly only impacting, for the most part, commercial properties that are located along that fairly limited Rockingham Corridor area. I don't want to say exclusively, there may be a residential property or two along there that are touched, but I think the constituent may be asking about properties that are a little bit further behind, and there are some residential properties, especially to the north, just outside of the area. In terms of the impact in general, I think it would be fair to say that, almost similarly to what Corporation Council mentioned, there's no direct impact, but there could be a very positive one, hopefully, from the standpoint of if future development happens, in terms of some of the aesthetic design concerns on the commercial properties, might have an indirect benefit on residential properties, but there shouldn't be any direct impact on residential.
And Bruce, as this process moves forward, you know, it's gonna take time, this isn't something that's gonna have an immediate impact, or, you know, it's gonna take one, two, three, maybe 10 years for the neighborhood to see, you know, a vision realized, you know, this is just an opportunity to improve that area and improve the neighborhood, and we're pretty sure it's gonna assist everybody in the area. Thanks, Bruce.
Elder Woman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I just wanted to say thank you again to the Rockingham Task Force, it was people who live and work along that corridor who came, met, spent their time giving input and giving feedback that was rolled into the plan that we have, so I want to thank them for their efforts, that's incredibly important that they were involved.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. Can we have somebody from staff come up and explain how this process is actually working with the current business owners?
Sarah Ad, Assistant to the City Administrator. Do you have a specific question you would like me to address?
Well, if somebody currently owns the business, we're not, they can continue to do the business they're doing, and we're not, it's zoned for that currently now, we're not changing anything.
That is correct. So, if there is a property that is changing zoning classifications, they will become a non-conforming use if the new classification is different than their current classification, if they already have a business that is in place. We have worked with a lot of business owners that had that same question, and we are coming to a good outcome with them.
Alderman Mattson.
Thank you for a second time. Thank you, Alderman Dunn, ma'am. So that helps clarify if someone has a current business and their zoning stays.
Well, the zoning changes, but it becomes a non-conforming use, which means it's allowed to continue that use even though it may not be allowable under the new zoning.
Okay, to make sure, I'll make sure the person talks with you, but I think we're tracking them. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman Dunn, for clarifying.
All right, seeing no other items of this, no other folks who want to discuss this item, I will ask Alderman Clul to set the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that items one, two, three, and nine move forward to discussion, items four, five, six, seven, and eight to consent. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And back to you, mayor, that concludes community development this evening.
Thank you, I think we have met the threshold of time. Again, just as a clarification, we have public hearings, which we publish in advance, this was published to be at 5:30, since we moved the meeting up related to Red, White, and Boom and the time we want everybody to be able to have an opportunity to be there. But now at 5:30, we're gonna kind of go back in the agenda, and we're gonna have, there's seven public hearings this evening, and again, a little bit of clarification, what we were just doing are agenda items for... what we were just doing are agenda items for the following week, and if you notice, we said there was a number of those, had discussion, there were no questions, we're gonna move those on for a consent agenda and an approval next week. Any ones that have some discussion, they then would be discussed in more detail next week. They talk about first consideration, 'cause some of you may be new tonight, a first consideration, second consideration, third consideration, mean ordinances, as we build those and develop those, they have a committee to hold, which is tonight, a discussion, and then a vote on that, that happens three times over six weeks. So you just understand a little bit of the process, if you're new to this environment, uh, to do that. Public hearings, we make sure we publicize that, so on top of all of that, we let everybody know what we're talking about before those, uh, situations happen. So, with that in mind, we're gonna go back to the beginning and have the public hearings. Our first area of public hearings will be Community Development, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Alderman Grip to lead that public hearing.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, we have four public hearings in Community Development this evening, so I will open the public hearing for case number REZ eighteen dash zero six, being the request of Tim Schaefer of Schaefer Automotive Service LLC, doing business as Dale's Service Center for the rezoning on four thousand three hundred eighty square feet of property known as nineteen oh nine North Zenith Avenue. The rezoning is from R three Moderate Density Dwelling District to C two General Commercial District to provide parking for the associated business, Dale's Service. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is a hearing for the ordinance for case number REZ eighteen dash zero seven, being the request of Tim Schaefer of Schaefer Automotive Service LLC, doing business as Dale's Service, for a rezoning map amendment on six thousand square feet, more or less, of property known as thirty-eight sixteen West Locust Street, located north of West Locust Street and east of North Zenith Avenue. The rezoning is from R three Moderate Density Dwelling District to C two General Commercial District to provide parking for the associated business, Dale's Service Center. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number three is a public hearing for the purpose of amending the urban revitalization area plans for the central city and north urban revitalization areas. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number four is a public hearing for the ordinance for case ORD eighteen dash zero two, ordinance amending Title Seventeen to incorporate a zoning component to promote and create a commercial identity for the Rockingham Road corridor through design and use standards. This text amendment will include a map amendment for the area along Rockingham Road from John Fell Drive in the southwest and to Marquette Street in the northeast portion of the corridor. City of Davenport is the petitioner. Chapter seventeen point six zero of the Davenport Municipal Code allows for text and map amendments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. And back to you, Mayor, that is all of the public hearings for Community Development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. We're now gonna move on to public hearing for Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead, uh, those three public hearings.
Thank you, Your Honor. I opened the first public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, estimated cost for the twenty-eighteen Bridge Maintenance Construction Program. Anybody from the public wishing to address that, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
The next public hearing is on the proposed changes to the shuttle that connects the Ground Transportation Center, Rock Island, and the Main Street Hub to Alcorica, previously A-PAC. Anybody wishing to address that, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The last public hearing is on the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost covering the Main Street Landing Phase Two Construction Project. Anybody from the public wishing to address that? Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Again, as we clarify, there may be some new folks that are here, um, those are public hearings, those are publicized, we noted in the material that it were starting at five-thirty, so we didn't start those until five-thirty, we went into our regular agenda. We only discuss the items that are on this agenda, uh, that we've published in advance. Other items, there'll be a place later in the meeting for a listening session, but we listen and don't cut, respond to any of the other items, so public have an opportunity to come at the end of the meeting and voice discussion. As I said before, if there are any topics that, um, are potentially, uh, thought about for discussion at a later date, you'll get receiving, uh, information related to those, and there'll be a committee hold like this, where we'll discuss it, the community will have an opportunity to participate, and then we'll move that on to a council meeting, same discussion opportunities and a vote, and we'll do that three diff, uh, three different cycles or six different weeks of information, just so you're aware as you come forward, um, on later on as we move into the rest of the agenda. So our second part, as we get back into our normal agenda, we're gonna move, our second area to be discussed is public, is public safety, and Alderman, no, it's not, um, I had my pages changed. That is right, here we go, sorry, I'm sorry. Is public safety, and Alderman Rossin will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm gonna read these by sections and then ask for commentary, reading the first three together. Uh, item number one, third consideration ordinance amending Schedule fourteen of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Intersection Traffic Signals by Adding Division Street at Seventy-Sixth. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending Schedule eight of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Thirty-Minute Parking by Adding Main Street along the east side from Second Street North to the alley. Item number three, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule seven of Chapter ten point nine six entitled No Parking by Adding Pine Street along the east side from Hickory Grove Road North, one hundred and fifty feet. Of those three items, is there any one from the public that would like to comment on any of those three? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. Uh, section four, resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Max Tavern, Annual BIC Street Fest, July twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, Thursday, July twenty-sixth, beginning at ten AM to Sunday, July twenty-ninth at twelve PM. Closure location will be Third Street between Harrison and Ripley Streets. Village of East Davenport Association, Farm Days in the Village, August eighteenth, two PM to seven PM. Closure location, Eleventh Street between Mound and Jersey Ridge Road, and Jersey Ridge Road from Eleventh Street to Twelfth Street. Palmer College Homecoming, August ninth through eleventh, six AM to twelve AM each day. Closure location will be Palmer Drive between Main and Perry Street, the two east lanes of Brady Street from Eighth Street to Palmer Drive, and on the night of fireworks, Saturday, August eleventh, closure of Perry Street south of Palmer Drive to Eighth Street and from eight-thirty PM to eleven PM. Of those three items, any comments from the public? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. Next section, again, being read together, motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Uh, three items, Max Tavern, three sixteen West Third Street for the annual BIC Fest, July twenty-sixth, three PM to ten PM, July twenty-seventh, four PM to two AM, and July twenty-eighth, nine AM to two AM, and July twenty-ninth, eleven AM to ten PM, over fifty DBA. Quad City Times, BIC seven, Starting Line Flyover Event, Hawkeye Howitzer Starting Gun, July twenty-eighth, eight AM to twelve PM, over fifty DBA. Palmer College Homecoming Fireworks Display, August eleventh, eight PM to eleven-thirty PM, over fifty DBA. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either of those three items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. Section six, uh, motion approving beer and liquor license applications, these are for new licenses. Uh, Barrel House, two eleven, two oh seven to two eleven East Second Street, outdoor area, July twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, for the BIC event, license type C. Max Tavern, three sixteen West Third Street, outdoor area, July twenty-seven through twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, BIC event, license type C. Me and Billy, two hundred West Third Street, outdoor area, twenty-seven through the twenty-ninth, BIC event, license type C. Kill Kenny's Pub and Eatery, three hundred West Third Street, outdoor area, uh, July twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth, BIC event, license type C. The Office, one sixteen West Third Street, outdoor area, July twenty-eight through twenty-ninth for the, also for the BIC event, uh, we have a lot of events down there, license type C. Front Street Brewery Tap Room, four twenty-one West River Drive, east parking of and adjacent upstairs patio, outdoor area, July twenty-eighth, license type B. Street Fest, Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce, Second Street from Brady Street to Ripley Street, outdoor area, July twenty-seven through the twenty-eighth, license type beer or wine. Anyone from the public wish to comment on any of those items? Yes, Mr. Warner?
Uh, there's one more for Rudy's Tacos.
Oh, is there? Oh, sorry, I was just skipping right over that. Rudy's doesn't need a license for selling liquor, uh, and I apologize, Rudy's Tacos. So one more, Rudy's Tacos. I was going through Ward Three, Marion. Uh, Rudy's Tacos, thirty, it's all Ward Three. Thirty-nine forty-four Elmore Avenue, outdoor area, July eighth, Taco Run, license type C, and this item will be voted on later in the agenda. Got them all. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Uh, the last one is annual license renewals, and there's just one item, and you can read that, uh, we don't, I don't read those on the agenda, it's for Barrel House, um, and I would ask Alderman Condon to set the agenda. Hmm? No, it's, we're voting on it later. It's just moving everything, noting that we're voting on that later.
Yeah, I moved, uh, place all items on the consent agenda, noting that we'll be voting on the Rudy's Tacos event later this evening.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign? All right, this, we're done with this section, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rossin. Again, as we mentioned, you can see by this process, again, some of you who may be new to this process, uh, anything that goes by us is vetted publicly, transparently, uh, so anything we're gonna do is in fact included, whether they be liquor license or closing streets or large ordinances, whatever they happen to be, uh, so just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Uh, and we say moving on, next week, there'll be a consent agenda, the items that did not need any additional discussion, and we'll approve those in one group, so just so you're aware as you're moving into coming to visit us, so thank you, thank you again for being here. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that, um, discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. First staff, I'd like to have someone to highlight one, three, and six. The first item of discussion is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter thirteen point one six entitled Waste Water Facilities to Include Changes Needed Per the EPA Pre-Treatment Streamline Rule. We'll have someone from staff explain what the EPA is requesting.
Clay Merritt, Public Works, every now and then, the EPA, um, with the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, requests various changes to the, um, to our ordinance and the way that we process wastewater, um, this is one of these changes, um, it's just meeting the new standards, and we've reviewed those with, um, both the EPA and the DNR, and they have, they've accepted them.
Will there be a cost as this thing moves forward to address the request?
Uh, cost directly to the city or directly to potential businesses? One of the changes, for example, is if an industry, um, came in, that they need to be pre-treating their wastewater at their current site and then discharge it into the city system, and, and then it goes to the plant. Um, that is a change, but that is, um, put forth by the EPA.
That's the only cost that will affect the public, or will it be affecting the residents also?
I will double check on that, um, and get back to you, uh, on Thursday.
All right. Clay, why don't you stick around? The second item is resolution approving the plans, specification, form of contract, estimated cost for the twenty-eighteen Bridge Maintenance Construction Program. Number three is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, estimated cost covering the Main Street Landing Phase Two Construction Project. Clay, before you do that, Alderman Rossin.
Thank you. A quick question for staff, so in reading the supporting material for the Bridge Maintenance Construction Program, I didn't notice that two bridges weren't included. Can I ask about those, Elm Street and Thirteenth Street? Do we have any forward movement, or is that a get back to us later?
Uh, Alderman Rossin, uh, the city engineer, the finance director, myself, are in, uh, conversation with the railroad about those two particular bridges.
Okay. You, are you hopeful?
Uh, yes.
I'm trying to get a positive.
As, as hopeful as you can be with the railroad.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good crushed question, Alderman Rossin, thanks. Clay?
So, item number three for Phase Two, um, if you've gone down to the riverfront, you'll notice that they started Phase One yesterday, which is the demolition work, take about a month, once demolition of the existing infrastructure is in place, then they'll put the civic, or what we like to call the civil side of it, so the new parking lot on top, along with the drainable bases, and setting all the conduit up. Phase Two is everything, um, people like to say is the pretty stuff, is the, the pavers, the trees, the pits, the streetscaping along the, along the River, um, River Drive portion that you'll see. We're hoping to, um, get moving forward on that one around Labor Day. Well, uh, i- if the Mississippi River would like to cooperate.
All right. The public will have an opportunity after I go through these items to ask questions and share their opinion. Number four is resolution accepting East Twenty-Ninth Street pavement improvement projects, Eastern Avenue to Railroad Crossing, completed by Langman Construction. Number five is resolution of acceptance for the East Sixth Street Boulevard Improvement Projects, Phase Two, Grand Avenue to five hundred feet west, completed by Needham Excavation of Walcott. And number six, Clay, is a resolution on the proposed changes to the shuttle that connects the Ground Transportation Center, Rock Island, and the Main Street Hub to Alcoric, formerly A-PAC. You know, for the public, we have a lot of individuals that ride our great transit.
So this is expanding services, um, out to our industrial, um, industrial center, especially as, as Kraft Heinz and Sterilite is coming online, so this is being able to make sure that if there's workers that wish to take our bus service, that they can go specifically to those, um, large-scale industries.
All right. Thanks. Number seven is resolution moving the contract for the Jungie Park Bike Path Project to Langman Construction Incorporated. The contract amount is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Authorizing Mayor Frank Klipsch to sign the advantage-related agreements. Number eight is a motion accepting the associate, work associated with the two-hundred block of Brady Street, streetscape improvement project. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the Jungie Park, I just wanna say thanks, 'cause it's, uh, real needed, and, uh, Mr. Hope, you'll be missed, uh, since, uh, I didn't have the opportunity, so I wish you well, but thank you for this.
All right. Number eight is accept, is a motion accepting the associate with the two-hundred block, two-hundred block of Brady Street, streetscape improvement. Number nine is a motion approving the purchase of a TV sewer camera van for the Sewer Division to Trans Iowa Equipment of Anketi, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. And the last item is a motion to approve the contract for Utica Ridge Sidewalk, Phase Two, dismissed, C, Incorporated, Eldridge, Iowa, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred, one, eight hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. Okay. Anybody from the public wishing to address any of these items? Seeing no one, Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
I make a motion to place all items on consent, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed tonight is finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion, and Alderman Guinness will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one item tonight for finance, and I will read that item. Um, it's resolution authorizing the submission of a build program application to the United States Department of Transportation for grant assistance with the development of Main Street Landing, along with enhancing the infrastructure, connectivity, and accessibility in downtown Davenport. Um, first, I'm just wondering- First, I'm just wondering if staff could come up and just explain a little bit as to what this is. It's pretty exciting, great opportunity for us, so thank you.
Clay Merritt, Public Works. So, the United States Department of Transportation releases on an annual basis their largest-scale discretionary grant program, and it's meant in which transportation can be rebuilt and revitalized to help with economic development. So, the city's proposed project is to not only fix our infrastructure downtown, as well as have some enhancements, and then also include the development of Main Street Landing Park. Our put to the DOT was, is that equality of life amenity, the size and nature of Main Street Landing, not to mention that is also something that the community has been looking forward to for the last few decades, will help propel that and as well as accentuate the transportation infrastructure repairs that will happen as well.
Thank you. In just a moment, Alderman Gripp, I think, has a question for you.
And a compliment to Clay in particular, but, you know, this, this build grant is what was once known as the Tiger Grant. We took a pretty good swing at this last time, but we continue to get better and more educated on how we can bring those federal dollars back to the city of Davenport, and Clay has really led that effort on putting together better proposals, and this is a really good proposal. It mixes infrastructure, which everyone in this room knows we desperately need. We're talking north-south streets, east, east-west streets in the downtown, going up into the hilltop. Main Street is in need of desperate repair. That's included in here, and then we all know that we have high hopes for what Main Street Landing can be, but that's, that's a pretty big task for a city to do on its own, and this is an opportunity to ask the federal government to help us out and, and make that happen. So, I'm very hopeful, and if we don't get it, I know that we will recollect ourselves, figure out ways that we can be better, and make another pass at this, and eventually we're going to be successful, and we're going to get these things done. So, good job, staff.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you. Thank you for your forward-looking, but we've had some discussions on this. I just want to clarify, Ms. Spiegel, that we, we can talk later, we don't have to do now, we'd talk more, but that you're working on some of the concerns. Is that fair?
Yes, we've looked into your inquiries about the funding sources and what the city's match is.
Right.
And can provide you additional detail.
I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to just, again, echo Alderman Gripp's comments related to the work that Clay has been doing, but also, this is a big community project, and we will be reaching out to the community, community organizations, asking them for letters of support, because this is, again, as we all know, it's our dollars that Washington is holding for us for a while, so we'd like some of our dollars back. So, this is a great initiative, and we would like to, in fact, get as much community support to let everybody know that this is, and I've already talked to my colleague mayors around the area as well, this isn't just Davenport, this is something good for our whole region. So, we'll be talking about that as well. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay. I ask Alderman McGinnis to go ahead and set the agenda.
And I would make a motion that this be moved to the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Make that note. In addition, that's it for finance, and then we do have some items that are just for informational purposes only, and those are purchases which are listed, and that is all for finance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some other, again, under our, under the ordinances, resolutions, and motion. We have a, we need a motion to suspend the rules on the vote that will, on the vote on the following motion. So, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and this is the motion that Alderman Rossin discussed earlier. It's a motion to temporary outdoor area for Rudy's Tacos at 3944 Elmore Avenue, an outdoor area July 8th, 2018, for the Taco Run, a license type C liquor. Is there any public with comments on that item? Seeing none, any other Aldermen? With that, we will, roll call, please.
Rossin?
Motion and a second?
Oh, we did have a second.
Oh.
Oh, second and move. Thank you.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And our other item here, we do have an opportunity for public with business. I would just share, again, some of you got here a little bit after we had started. This is a, this portion that we have now is a listening session, so all the other items were on the agenda, and there are some discussion opportunities. So, we have a public with business where we listen to you, if anybody has anything they'd like to share. We don't vote on these, we don't act on those. Those are only done through the committee process, so there would be a committee, the whole discussion, followed by a committee, I mean, a committee, the whole session of the council, and then a council voting. We would do that three different times for six total meetings. So, if there's anybody with public that would like to make any comments, please do so, and again, as I mentioned, please identify yourself and your address and/or your ward, and we ask that you would limit your remarks to five minutes. So, does anybody wants to have a comment on this item?
Scott Hope, 6th ward, actually, still for a couple more weeks. I just wanted to publicly thank the council for their support over the last four years, both as a body, as, as all of you, for some of the great projects that we've been able to take on, and then individually, too, many of you have been very involved in, in helping us get through and make the Parks Department better. We know, we, in the Parks and Recreation Department, we like, we, we think we're a great part of the overall city, but we know there are a lot of other parts as well. So, thank you for the last four years. I also want to thank Cory publicly as well. She's been great, short of the cake and the video. It has been a great experience working with her and the team that she has put together. Also, we'll share that singing a couple of Mother Goose nurture rhymes is nothing compared to what I've done at other jobs, so if you'd see all the scooter videos, you'd be much more impressed. They're much better if you watch them all and get the full context of the video. Oh, yeah, there, there. Yeah, great, we have them. I also want to thank my wife for that, I'm guessing, so. I want to thank the other department heads. They, it has really been a joy to work with, as well as some of the other key members of the city management team. Again, great group of people, and I'm really going to miss it. Obviously, I've talked to many of you, you know, family reasons make the new move something that's kind of needed to do. So, also publicly, want to thank our Park and Recreation staff. They are a great team and a great group of people, so I've enjoyed that. And then also my wife and family who are here as well. I texted her that she could leave if she wanted to, but she really wanted to sit through this and see what I go through every Wednesday night, so I appreciate her support and, and the kids and stuff as well, too, as we move forward. So, it has been a lot of fun, so I want to say thank you for that, and there'll be cake later. Brandon's not here to enjoy it, and that's probably the most disappointing part, that Brandon gets, doesn't get to see his great picture on the cake as well, too, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public with business this evening? Seeing no one, is there a motion to talk to Mr. Johansson? Public with business?
Open.
Yeah, public with business, yeah, just identify yourself, please, and your ward or location.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Ralph Johansson. My address is 1312100th Avenue, Davenport, Iowa. I'm here not representing the Davenport School Board. I'm here as a person, as a citizen of, of Davenport and of the state of Iowa. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been somewhat distressed, I guess, by the approach that's being taken to re-stripe West Central Park to three lanes, and I've tried to get information on it. I haven't been very successful. I think I understand a lot about how the process is going to happen, and I have been able to access some of the DOT data that appears to be being used to support the reasons for the re-striping. When I've looked at that data, I've, I have found what I believe to be a glaring error that I thought everybody would see, and I thought that that's something that all of the Aldermen would be thinking about and looking at, and that the, whoever's in charge of doing the re-striping would be thinking about that also. When I looked at it, and, and when I talked with some of the people at the, the department that's involved in this, they indicated that there was an accident at Harrison and Central Park, and I thought, now, that's quite a ways from Assumption and Trinity Lutheran School. And I asked whether there had been any consideration for those particular driveways, as, as people are going to be going to school at both of those locations, and they're going to be coming from the east and from the west, and I believe you're going to have significant problems in that area, but it appears that that's just too bad. I did ask if there could be any baseline data that could be used, something so that if we understand that here's the way things are now, and then in the future, if there's a way to say, using future data, oh, man, we really did screw up, is there a way to, to change the decision and to say, maybe it wasn't so bad? The, as I looked at it and tried to understand it, it sounds like safety may be the only measure, and I don't know if that's true or not. If safety is the only measure, and all we want to do is reduce all accidents, and according to the data I had for the last 10 years, you had a number of accidents and no fatalities, a few minor injuries, the way that I read the data. I was told that we really have it too good here, and that a little bit of gridlock or an extra five or 10 minutes to make that trip is really no big deal. So, I'm just hopeful that the city, the Aldermen, and whoever's responsible for that particular project, because it sounds like that project will not be authorized through the city council the way I understand it. I just hope that there's a way to seriously measure that and to reconsider it. I wish that there were sufficient data beforehand, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public? Seeing no one else, are there any reports of city officials this evening?